Good morning, everyone. Love to see a packed house. We got an amazing recognition of folks this morning that, an amazing accomplishment, 40 years in the school district. And so we're excited to do that at this morning's meeting. So before we get going, I do want to read our district's vision, which is the school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. With that, I want to move to the invocation. Mr. Jim Nelson is going to give our invocation. Longtime leader of Young Life, Manatee County Young Life, won't say how long, to Asia and Manatee Football's chaplain. So if you want to step up to the podium, everybody will stand for me for the invocation, followed by the pledge.
Lord, thank you so much for this time, for this meeting. We ask your blessing over to us that you be with these folks behind me who lead us. Lord, and I thank you for the folks that are being recognized today and for all their service and the way they've supported our young people and our community. Lord, thank you that we live here. Thank you that we have such a great school system. And we pray where we need to grow, that it'll grow. And we pray for our students, our teachers, our coaches, our support staff, our administrators, and our families, Lord. We put them in your hands, and we thank you again for this meeting and ask your blessing on it. In your son's mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, move to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. Before we do a vote, I do want to say the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on May 14th, 2024 Agenda, updated on May 13th and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. There were some names and things like that on some of our consent items and things that needed to be adjusted. So those were some of the amendments, nothing anything crazy, some additions to new business. So looking for a motion on approving the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Your motion is second. Is everybody in? I'd like to see. You got in good? Okay. So we have a motion is second. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda? That passes five to zero. Item six, approval of the minutes. Dr. Weisong.
Good morning, Chairman. I recommend approval of the minutes of the March 21st, 2024 School Board Workshop, the April 9th, 2024 School Board Meeting, the April 12th, 2024 School Board Workshop, and the April 23rd School Board Meeting and Public Hearing.
That moved.
We have a motion and our second. Any... Okay, perfect. Go ahead, vote on the approval of the minutes on those said meetings, and that passes five to zero. Moving on to item number seven, student celebrations. Mr. Barber, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, and Superintendent Weisong. As you know, when we get to this time of the year, it sort of feels like you're on a bullet train heading for the station. Of course, I don't have to tell them that, but they've been doing it for quite a while. But we have two great recognitions today that sort of, you know, say a lot about our school district, and so we're honored to have these people here. The first one is each year, there's an annual math competition. And it's a neat thing. You're going to find out how long it's been going on and just sort of, I think you'll get the gist of the significance of it. So to get us started, I'm going to introduce Allison Nichols. She's our Director of Elementary Instruction for the school district. So Allison.
All right. Good morning, Chair Choat, board members, Dr. Weisong. The Mathematics Superstar Competition is a longstanding Manatee County Schools tradition, sponsored in partnership with the American Association of University Women. I believe it's been going on for 25 years, I think. So I wanted just first a huge thank you to Don Becker, who is our Elementary Math Science Curriculum Specialist, and Susan Smucker, who is our Elementary Math Science Coordinator. They both took the lead on organizing this amazing day for our elementary students. So on Saturday, April 27th, 4th and 5th grade students from 33 of our schools competed against each other in teams of two. The teams were required to work together to complete 25 challenging, above-grade-level mathematics questions. And when I say above-grade-level questions, went all the way up through 7th grade math. And then all participants who were there that day received a bookmark and a certificate from the AAUW. The top teams received T-shirts, cash prizes that were donated by AAUW, and then calculators. So starting with first, our fourth place, and I'll work backwards. Our top performing teams were, so in fourth place, we had a tie. We had Bayshore Elementary. The team was Wesley Ray and Matthew Crosby. The coach was Dr. Melinda Lindy. And tied in fourth place was Willis Elementary with students Isabella Din and Benjamin Rodriguez, and their coach was Megan Podolin. And then in third place was Anna Maria Elementary. Students were Asher Patel and Cooper Pitkin, and their coach was Nicole O'Neal. And then we had a tie for second place, Freedom Elementary. And the team was Ryder Ralph and Willa McGurk, and their coach was Amanda Hurst. And then tied with Freedom was McNeil Elementary, and the students were Brayden Bishop and Justin Pham, and their coach was Julie Reed. So with that, I think we're going to play a video. Start a little video?
Yes.
We are at Manatee Technical College for the Math Superstar Competition, which is a math competition for students in 4th and 5th grade around our county. We have 33 schools represented. Today, our 4th and 5th grade superstars get to take a math assessment for 45 minutes, and they work in partners to complete a very challenging math assessment. The winning school gets a traveling trophy. All students will be recognized today at the end of the competition.
Today, we participated in the Math Superstars Competition. The competition was very fun.
It was pretty easy. Like, the question, there's some questions that she answered that, and I answered that.
It's very good working as a team because you can take two people's abilities and put them together.
Like, if you're not so good at one something, the other person can be good at one thing.
I personally like math because there's just one answer, and it doesn't really flow and fluctuate like English does.
All right, and today, we have here with us the top team, which was from Gullett Elementary School. And they achieved a perfect score on the test. And so we have Liam Durball here and Jude Polhamus. Their coach was Jarrett Williams. So Liam and Jude, you have made us all very proud with your exceptional performance in the Mathematics Superstar Competition. You have demonstrated not only your talent and skill in mathematics, but also your dedication, perseverance, and enthusiasm for learning. In addition to the prizes you have already received, your names have been added to the trophy, and Gullett will get to keep and display this trophy for the 24-25 school year until next year's competition. So go ahead. All right, and I'd like to welcome Todd Richardson, the proud principal at Gullett Elementary, to say a few words.
Yes, thank you very much, board members, Mr. Choat, Mr. Weisong. Gullett has never won this competition in 17 years, so we're very honored to have our name on this trophy. These boys really worked hard. They are a member of our acceleration program at Gullett. There's three classes that we have. We have 230 5th graders, and 75 of them are in the accelerated program. And they are already completing 6th grade math curriculum as of next week. They've gotten Level Fives on every one of their tests since 3rd grade, and with perfection, Jude got a perfect score on his math, his science test last week for the state. So Jude is no stranger to perfection. So congratulations. So very honored to be here with the boys. They do a great job, and it's just a testament to our teachers at our school that pour into these kids on a daily basis, because we've got a lot of them, and they do a great job there. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we're going to get a picture of this school board. Oh, by the way. Parents, could you all stand up and just sort of write this?
It's good that they won calculators.
Yeah, they'll need them. I think we should do a board mathematical 5th grade. I know I wouldn't get a perfect score.
We can definitely set that up for you. Next workshop.
See if we can pass.
Thank y'all. Congrats, boys.
They're in a rush to get back to school.
Yeah, they gotta get to school and learn.
And in this case, it's actually true, I think.
Yes, they got a ways to go, too. All right, that moves us to reports and presentations, so.
Yes, our next recognition is extremely special, and it's just such an honor to really just be in the presence of these individuals and to really get us started. Kevin Chapman, Executive Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, you know, as you know, Mike Barber likes themed board meetings. So this is, we're continuing this champion, championship, champion board meeting. So behind me are some incredible employees who I'd like to invite to come up to stand behind me. So all the honored employees, if you could assemble kind of behind me. Mike will help you here as I kind of... So I have Mr. Chair and Board and Dr. Weisong. I have the, really the honor today. When you think about this time of year, it's really one of the best times of year, right? You have, in August is one great time of year when we welcome all our students and teachers back. But this time of the year, especially tonight, is our first graduation ceremony, and as we honor all our senior, senior, high school seniors headed off to their successful lives and journeys. But we also celebrated last week Teacher Appreciation Week, where we thanked not only our teachers and educators, but all our staff around the district. And today, at this board meeting, behind me are our longest-serving employees currently in the school district of Manatee County, and it's an honor to have them here today. So these individuals, these colleagues, who really have, like Mike said, filled this room with such honor and celebration. These employees really represent what Manatee County, this school district, is all about. Excellence in education, dedication to our students, our first-rate schools, giving back to our community, and positive role models for our youth. And we are honored here, and Dr. Weisong's going to join me here in a minute. We're going to honor these employees. There's 16 of these employees who have served this district for 40 years or more in Manatee County. And there are two, and one of them is with us today, who is celebrating their 50th year here in Manatee County. So it's an incredible lifetime achievement. And there are a few of some of these employees who couldn't be with us because they're teaching in classrooms even as we speak. So just incredible dedication to this district, to this community, and this county. So if Dr. Weisong can join me, so many of these employees, and on the next presentation, you'll see about our new employee recognition program. We've honored all these employees behind me with 25-year-plus awards. We're now going to award them with 40-year and 50-year recognitions. And so what we've created, and on your screens, you'll see, we've created a special 40-year PIN for these employees, and then a 50-year PIN as well. So what we'd like to do is I'm going to call or welcome each employee to be recognized and maybe just say a minute or two if you'd like. You don't have to, but if you'd like, we'd love to hear from you and share with us this great day as we honor you. So there are two employees who are celebrating 50 years. One is Linda Carnes, who's currently teaching English at Palmetto High School as we speak. So we, Ms. Carnes, when you see this later, we thank you. We'll get you your 50-year PIN when you're done teaching today. But we do have another 50-year employee who's here today, who we'd like to honor with the 50-year PIN, and that's Pat Barber. So Pat Barber, 50 years. Congratulations. So thank you, Pat, for your 50 years of dedication here to Manatee County. The next group of employees to really honor are all at 40 years and above. There are a few that are celebrating 40 years even this week is their 40th anniversary. So really incredible. But I know, I'll kind of go down on this list here. I know Mr. Fobbs is here. Mr. Fobbs, there you are. 44 years. Is that right, Mr. Fobbs? Congratulations. Come on over and receive your 40-year PIN and the superintendent's coin. And we thank you, Mr. Fobbs. Would you like to say something? All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fobbs. Next, I know we have Ms. Bernita Washington. I think you told me 47 and a half years. So thank you, Ms. Washington. Congratulations. I know Ms. Washington wants to get back to Tillman Elementary, right? But thank you so much for your service. I know we got Coach France. Come on, Coach France. He told me 41 years. Yeah, thank you, Coach. I'm going to get some golf lessons, I think, from Coach France, but...
I've got my card for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Coach, would you want to say? All right. Well, thank you.
Available golf lessons all the time, all summer long.
Thank you. Well, we know how good that team is at the ranch, but... And I know Ms. Barbara Stachow. Is I going to say that right?
Yes, Stucko.
Yes, Stucko. Congratulations, Ms. Stucko. That's 40... I think you, I think you told me 42 years in the school district, but 45 years of teaching. So thank you so much. Thank you. And I know this probably means I'm going to get a hug and a kiss, probably, but Linda Agresta, 40, I think 41 years, Ms. Linda. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Here, get your 40-year PIN and your coin. 41 years of hugs, I'll tell you. It's wonderful.
Can I say something?
Of course. Yeah.
Because you know, it wouldn't be Linda Agresta without talking. I just want to say, really, I started teaching in '77. I moved to Dallas, taught four years in Texas, so it's a total of 45 years. But it has been my honor and privilege to teach in this school district. I have taught pre-K to 88-year-olds. I have been able to educate and advocate for all those kids that have needed someone to take care of them. And you all, everybody in this room, and prior superintendents and directors have allowed me to do what I do best, which is take care of the children. So again, thank you. I'm honored and I'm flattered. I knew I'd get through this, Stephen, without crying, okay? All right. I'll see you at Kiwanis.
And I also, you know, behind me are obviously these incredible employees and colleagues, but also in the audience are many of their colleagues, friends, family members, supervisors. So we also want to honor them and thank them for being here to honor their colleagues. Next, I think at 40-plus years is Willie Lowry, right? Yeah? Come on down, Willie. Congratulations. Great job. Get your 40-year PIN and coin. Want to say a few words? All right, good.
I just want to say to the school board, I thank you for this opportunity to bear this recognition. And in my lifespan and with the school board, I had an opportunity to open up four schools. I opened up Brayden River Elementary School on State Route 70. I opened up Brayden River Miller School also on State Route 70. I opened up Legwood Ranch. And then I had the opportunity to call out of retirement to Oakmont Prairie High School, where I'm at right now. Thank you.
And next, I think, is Dr. Deborah Shannon, 42 years, right? Dr. Shannon, thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Would you like to say? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Shannon. Thank you. And then we have Estelle Sales. Yeah, all right. 42 years? Congratulations. 42 years, Ms. Sales. Thank you so much. And you brought a whole cheering section back there. And so next is Ms. Sylvia Wilson with 42 years, right? Thanks, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Wilson. Thank you so much. And then with 41 years, I believe, Carol Barcena is behind me, right here. Thank you, Carol Barcena. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Carol told me that you were, you opened up essentially Manatee Technical College, but it was called...
VOTEC.
VOTEC at the time.
That was Manatee Area Vocational Technical Center.
1982?
Eighty-one is when I started without a contract, but eighty-two was my first contract.
Well, very nice.
And then it was MTC, and then MTI, then now MTC.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
I'm just very grateful to be here, and I thank you very much.
Ms. Sales, I forgot to ask you if you'd like to say something. Okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah. So I've got, we've got Karen Washington, who I believe is 40 years this year. So thank you, Ms. Washington, so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything, Ms. Washington? Okay, all right. Thank you so much. And then I believe celebrating 40 years this week is Ms. Lisa King. Behind me, here we are. Forty, 40 years. Thanks, Ms. King, very much. And I think we got, we have the whole group. So in total, behind me again is our incredible, longest-serving employees in the school district of Manatee County, and we honor them for their 40 and 50 years of service to our students and families here, and we thank them from the bottom of our heart. So thank you. Let's, we're going to do one big photo here, one big photo with the board here, if we can. Let's, we're gonna do one big photo here. One big photo with the board here if we can.
You still have something left to play, you said?
Yeah, yeah, there should be.
Oh, they put the uh oh, they had, there's a whole supply of the, they have the challenge points.
Your, your field's gotten crowded.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe more.
It's with the genie lamp on the back.
Interesting political season.
You rub it and you get to retire.
Relative newcomers, too.
Usually there's people that run every time, that jump in, that don't have much of following. You've brought up like the most complicated issue there is on uh you know, how to appoint the successor. Everyone you talk to's got a different opinion.
Yeah. So um unbelievable recognition. Uh I mean, forty years doing one thing is absolutely phenomenal. So great, and fifty, yeah, a couple of them. Great job from, from everybody, from Mr. Barber to the staff and everybody who do that, Dr. Weisong and and um really special to have uh that many group of people, forty-plus years. So uh very excited about that. I think we still have a presentation uh that we wanna show about our, our appreciation, teacher appreciation week.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Kevin Chapman, back to the podium here. Um I think MSTV's gonna pull up uh a slide here. So uh in our uh ready twenty-twenty-six strategic plan, this is a, a big part of uh the uh ready-to-grow uh section is, is employee recognition. It's, it's taken uh probably a year or two to get to this point, but we've, we've created and have now launched uh uh I, I think a very successful employee recognition program. So you just saw uh the forty and fifty-year employees be recognized during, last week during Teacher Appreciation Week. Uh we, uh the Dr. Weisong and Cabinet members were able to um uh descend on all of our schools and support sites to honor our employees who have served twenty-five years or more. Uh and those employees were recognized with uh what you have uh on the screen, which is essentially the, this, this new employee recognition program. So with employees, and, and you also have some of these, uh some of this in front of you to kinda feel and touch, but uh for employees twenty-five years or more uh received this gold lanyard, gold-colored lanyard. A pin that you also see on the screen there and in front of you, a pin that says twenty-five years or more. Uh and what else you have in front of you is a silver frame, uh engraved frame uh for them uh for their years of service, all in a school district canvas bag. So uh over six hundred employees um have uh uh that recognition of twenty-five years or more uh in the school district and uh one by one, they were uh honored uh by Dr. Weisong or a member of Cabinet uh and a principal or supervisor uh throughout the school district last week during T- Teacher Appreciation Week. Then over the next couple of months, uh we're then gonna launch uh the rest of the employee recognition program. So what the idea of this program is, is that employees with uh twenty-five years or more will be wearing this gold lanyard. Uh employees with uh fifteen to twenty-four years will be wearing a silver lanyard. Uh and then employees uh with five years to fourteen years will be wearing a bronze uh lanyard, and then employees uh who've just started, uh zero to four years is wearing a blue lanyard. Uh and then pins to represent those years as well. And the idea is, is that, you know, as you go to schools, you go to support sites, um you're in meetings, and you see an employee with a gold lanyard or a silver lanyard, you can say to yourself, wow, that's an employee who's been here for twenty-five years or more. Or eighteen years, or ten or twelve years. And so in your mind, you know, okay, uh wow, you know, thank you for your service and, and, and we appreciate you, and it kind of is a, is a badge of honor. So um that's the idea. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna launch this across the district so that by the end of this year uh all our six thousand-plus employees uh will have uh uh this kind of recognition. And then in twenty-twenty-five, we'll start all over again and recognize those who are then uh reaching their twenty-five, fifteen, or five-year mark. So um uh uh I wanna thank uh Omar Edwards uh and, and Danielle uh Domacolo, who really were my partners in crime on this, uh and the three of us really kinda devised this system over the last uh year or two. Uh Omar uh is actually at the Boys and Girls Club National Convention uh in Atlanta and learning uh some strategies and some, uh some great uh new um uh Boys and Girls Club initiatives to bring back here to Manatee County, but he uh is in his twenty-fourth year uh in the school district. So he would be wearing, which he is, his silver lanyard, and then next year he'll get his gold lanyard. Uh in June, uh I will celebrate five years in the school district, so I will graduate from blue to bronze uh in June uh to give you an example of kinda how this will, how this will work. And, and uh Dr. Weisong and, and, and Cabinet uh and leaders across the district will uh continue to hand out these employee reconne- recognition uh items throughout the year uh as we recognize employees across the district. Um the second slide, if uh, there we go. Um as you all know, we, we put together with the help of um uh Deb Gambino uh in the Communications Department, puts together a wonderful award ceremony every year. Um and this slide is to uh make sure everybody knows that nominations, uh that the period to nominate uh employees are, it's open. Uh you follow that QR code. Uh there are some of the uh categories, there's two categories um to nominate somebody in. Uh and you know, every year that, that award ceremony is really fantastic. So again, that's another way, uh in a very big way, uh that we um uh not uh recognize our employees by having um, you know, school finalists and then a district finalist, and then eventually our educator of the year and our sport employee of the year. And if you remember, what was that, maybe two years ago, we had a educator of the year reach uh the state finals for the, for the first time, a teacher from uh Seumesset, I believe. So um again, these, so this kind of expands on that. So this is our um uh ever-growing uh employee recognition program. Uh and also uh uh we also begin at I was gonna say we begin at the beginning. I don't know if the, the English majors will probably correct me there, but uh also Mr. Bailey uh in Human Resources and his team uh do a wonderful job. Also Tara Brown in Professional Learning uh with all of our new hires who come in, and we have new hire orientation. And we start to recognize them then and welcome them in the district uh uh with a two-day uh uh entry, um uh you know, meetings and conferences and, and uh all the onboarding that takes to, to, to bring somebody on to the district is our way of welcoming them to the district. Uh and, and they'll, they'll now learn about this recognition program as they get their blue lanyards and know that in five years, when they all stay, uh they'll be getting their bronze lanyard and onward. So uh it's, it's a good program, um and we'll keep looking at ways to expand it. We wanna make sure that we're obviously uh doing this in a way that's, you know, fiscally responsible, obviously. Uh we're not a corporation. Where, where many of you have worked in corporations know, you can be rewarded with a lot of nice things after twenty-five years, but since we're a government entity and, 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 and we need to be wise of all that, this is a great way to to really recognize employees in a, in a really uh heartfelt way uh and really do it in a way that's, that's meaningful and lasting uh and, and visible a- a- as well. So um that's um uh that's uh the presentation. I would just add one thing. For anybody listening and watching this board meeting at home or at work, uh just know that if you wanna come work uh at the School District of Manatee County and be recognized like this and feel valued uh on our website, uh manateeschools.net, uh there's a big button that says careers and click on that uh and apply, and you'll hear from Mr. Bailey in an hour here to uh to sign up and come on board. We need uh uh paraprofessionals and bus drivers and, and, and all kinds of positions. So it's really a great place to work, as you saw, and you can really build a lifetime uh of achievement here in, in Manatee County uh which you just witnessed. So uh we'd love to welcome anybody who'd like to come work for the school district and uh find us on our website, and uh we'll see you at uh Onboarding Orientation in August, uh and welcome you to the school district. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna say, thank you for working on this initiative and spearheading it and seeing it through. I think we are long overdue to do something like this. And uh the breakfast this morning, um getting to talk to them one-on-one was just fabulous. And I'm gonna say mm the majority of people I talked to, I talked to almost all of them, but one or two. And uh that almost all of them have retired and then come back. So I just wanna remind people, you know, take a little break, but come on back, you know, so, you know.
I think this is fantastic. Um I love the coin. I think that's another little, I have a lot of them and I stick them up on different places in my house to remind me who gave them to me and why. Uh and the pins with the twenty-five, the gold, the forty, and the fifty, and then the lanyards are even more significant uh to me, cause like you say, I visit schools. And some of the individuals here I've spoke to at the schools that I've visited, but I didn't know you know, you know that they were, Manatee L, one of the ladies that was here that had the band uh club. I spoke to her when we did our tour, yeah, Band Club. When uh I toured Manatee L with uh Superintendent Weisong, and I'm like, I remember you. And I said, yeah, I felt kinda almost intimidated because there was so much senior leadership at that school. And then I'm coming in here a year and a half in. So um but I think this is a great program. I liked the lanyard thing. You know, and I know we have something on our agenda for badges, maybe tie that in every year if they're getting a twenty-five-year lanyard, make their badge gold. That might be a, a thought. But I think it's great, and I wanna say thank you to all of them that serve. I mean, think of the not the uh thousands, but probably tens of thousands of students that each one of those people, that they touched their lives in some way or another. And uh they come back. You always remember that one teacher in your life. And I have one of those in my life, and um never forget her. So that's the impact that we have in our district with our uh staff. And like I've said before, we're not just we're career here as well. We're not just a government entity. We actually have careers. And they're long-lasting, as we can see, and I just wanna thank all of you for all the hard work that you did on this program.
I saw Mr. Johnson writing down gold badges.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that moves us to um item ten, public comment. I don't believe we have any public commenters signed up. So move to item number eleven, which is our consent items. Uh Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the school board meeting on May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
A second.
Have a motion and a second for the consent items. So let's go ahead and vote on approving those consent items. And that passes five to zero. Um moving on to, jumping down to item number fourteen, new business, non-consent items. Um item number one, approval of the budget amendments for March twenty-twenty-four. Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the budget amendments for March two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, and then Ms. Sellers, you wanna come on up?
Good morning, Chair Cho. How are you this morning? Um the month of March, uh we recorded six hundred and twenty-nine budget amendments, and they were affected by uh almost a twenty-nine-hundred chart strings. Three funds were affected for the accounts or the chart strings that were over a million. And uh in the general fund, uh they were related to revenue from um recognition of the third CAC state discretionary supplement, six-point-eight million. This was based on collections from Florida DOE. Uh there was additional uh investment revenue, two-point-six million. There was the Florida DOE School Recognition Award of three-point-eight million. And we also had a reduction of the capital fund transfer in of the uh general school maintenance of three-point-eight million. And then um in the capital fund, we had fourteen chart strings, uh six funds were affected. Uh in the PICO Construction uh MTC Fund, there was a move of, to correct uh program uh numbers related to the MTC Fire Range, that was one-point-eight million, and MTC Aviation School of Three Million. This is uh the beginning of where we see the um uh at recorded entries that were um booking in preparation of the five-year capital plan. So in the local capital improvement fund, we um moved the SSC project to the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. That was sixteen-point-five million. And also we had um the Bus Hubs Project also moved over to the twenty-four, twenty-five uh fiscal year, and that's uh one-point-five million. We also had an increase of impact fees, that was two-point-five million. And in the sales tax um proceeds, we actually moved the high school field upgrades uh uh from the sales tax proceed over to uh the one-point-five mil fund instead. And then also in the special revenue, we uh recognized in the ESER, we adopted uh textbooks of two-point-eight million, that was uh an expense, and there uh there was also the federal cash advance revenue, uh the school improvement grant, uh revenue upload of one-point-eight million. So that's it for my summary for today.
Thank you very much. I don't see any board members, I know we get briefed on this during our briefing, I don't see any board members that up to speak, so I appreciate that. So we had a motion and a second for this item, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendments for March twenty-twenty-four. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to item number two, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of job description and position changes for Food and Nutrition Services.
So moved. I'll second.
So the motion is second, and Dr. Weisong, you just wanna elaborate a little bit on what this change is?
Yes, sir. These are um three adjustments to our um Food and Nutrition Services Team um that were um bright, brought forth by uh Director Regina Toma. All of these um positions are swapped, so we're not adding personnel, we're just um taking vacant positions and, and repurposing them. And just a reminder that um all of these salaries and benefits are funded uh from the Food Service Fund, uh not from local dollars.
Thank you. I don't see any uh board members that up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on um the approval. Oh, I see budget in front of me.
Uh-oh. Wrong one. I voted for it anyway. I didn't, I didn't read them.
Well, I'll say yes on it again.
Yeah.
It's all good.
It should be fourteen, too.
Yep. So uh who motioned that on the last one?
I believe I did.
Okay.
Mary seconded.
There we go.
There it is.
Approval of job description, position changes for food and nutrition services, and that passes five to zero. Um item number three in our new business, uh Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of a new job description and position Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of a new job description and position of executive principal.
So moved. I'll second.
So you have a motion and a second. Uh, Dr. Wyssong, would you go ahead and explain what this, uh, position entails?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, uh, the intent of this position is to provide, um, the leadership team and the board. Um, with, um, an innovative option, um, whereby in unique circumstances, you would have a, a single principal. Uh, leading, um, two campuses or two schools. Um, this is a, uh, kind of an innovation opportunity. Um, to take advantage of unique, uh, circumstances, both in terms of geography or, or school climate and culture. Um, but also to create a, um, stronger, um, career pipeline for principals. So if you're a longtime successful principal, uh, and, um, uh, you're not interested in a district leadership position. You wanna stay in the trenches, um, this would be a kind of a natural next step. Um, this is new for Manatee County. It is not necessarily new, you know, for other districts. Um, these will not, uh, and, uh, it's the same explanation for the next item of, of senior assistant principal. So the notion is if you had two campuses. That were geographically close, um, or that, um, you were trying to create the same culture or, or program feeder. You could have one executive principal overseeing both those sites and then one or two senior assistant principals. Who already have their principal licensure and are working toward their career path. So creates a little bit of a career ladder. Within our school leadership positions, um, without people leaving, uh, the principalship. Um, so again, this won't be a routine item. Um, it's another tool in our toolbox for those unique circumstances. There are a couple that we're, you know, that we're looking at now that obviously would come to the board, um, for approval. But you, these won't be posted and advertised. Again, they're for very unique situations.
Great, thank you very much.
I like this idea.
So, uh, we don't, I don't see any board members lit up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of a new job description position of executive. Principal, and that passes five to zero. So move on to, uh, item number four, which is, uh, Dr. Wyssong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of a new job description and position of senior assistant principal.
I'll second.
And mentioning what you just said, you, you kind of already elaborated on that, so, uh, with the executive principal, so appreciate that. Uh, no board members are, are lit to speak, uh, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of a new job description position of senior. Assistant principal. And that passes five to zero. Item number, uh, five under new business. Um, with no recommendation, Superintendent Wyssong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of a new job description and position of coordinator for aviation maintenance technician school.
So moved. I'll second.
So you have a motion and a second, and if you wanna explain this position as well?
Certainly. Uh, Chairman and Board Members, this is the next step, uh, in the, uh, development of our future, um, A and P. Uh, mechanic program, um, which was, um, announced, um, I, I, I believe, um, right around a year ago. Um, and, um, of course, we have a lease with the airport authority, um, to, um, construct the hangar. Where the, where instruction will occur. Um, we're awaiting the outcome of one final grant opportunity to lock in the budget. So that design of the facility can get underway. Uh, this is a very unique, very specialized program, um, with a lot of moving parts. It is federally regulated and so it, uh, will ultimately need a, a, a full-time administrator overseeing the program. And so, uh, Dr. Gansmer and Mr. Wagner have prepared this job description. Um, we won't, um, you know, we, uh, this is again, the approval of the job description. At some point it will be posted and, uh, we'll go and find a great candidate to lead this next, uh, phase. Of the, um, MTC, uh, expansion.
Thank you very much. And we do have one.
I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this to us. Because I've had questions about that. It's like, they're like, what's going on with that? It's been a, a year, almost a year, nothing's been done. So I'm glad that you did this because this kinda starts laying the groundwork. We did the dirt work. Now we're starting to lay the behind-the-scenes groundwork to get this, uh, project going. And it is, it's very complex when you're dealing with something of this magnitude. Uh, and I don't think sometimes people don't understand. I, I know I certainly didn't until you start reading. I read the jo- job description all the way down to the end and it's, it is complex on what the qualifications are for that. It takes a unique person to do this kind of role too. So I'm excited for this. I hope I'm still around to see that. And be there for the grand opening. That'll be, uh, a sight to see, I think. So. That's all I wanted to say is thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this is gonna be exciting for, for our community and.
Mm-hmm.
Option for our kids, so, uh, our students, so. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the new job description and position of coordinator. Aviation Maintenance Technical School. Passes five to zero.
And somebody from the Air Force might find us a good.
Yeah, we may have a connection.
Sure, yeah, I'll do whatever I can.
There you go.
Um, all right, that moves us to, uh, items fifteen point one, which is, uh, approval to travel expenses. Associated with school board members. Superintendent Wyssong's attendance to the FSBA and the FADS Annual Joint Conference. Which is June fifth through the seventh at Grand Hyatt Tampa, not to exceed forty-six hundred dollars. So I know I'm going. I think, is everyone going? Okay, so four out of five. So, um, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
So you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? No? Should be a good one, like usual. Good information leading up to next school year. Um, so let's go ahead and vote on approval for the travel expenses associated with us going to. FSBA and FADS. Passes five to zero. Item number two under new business with no superintendent recommendation is approval of the appointment of member, of a member to citizen. Financial Oversight Committee. Um, Ms. Brett?
So moved, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
So you have a motion and a second. Ms. Brett, you wanna?
Uh, I, I met with Mr., um, De Silvestro, is how you say it. De Silvestro, Eric. Very enthusiastic to become a member of the CFAC committee. Uh, comes from up north. He's been here about two years, I think. And approached his wife and said he wanted to get involved with the community. So, uh, my, I met with him along with, uh, the CFAC Chair, Ms. Harrigan, and we think he'll be a good fit for, uh, this committee. So, and I, I'm sure all of you got the, uh, resume that he submitted to be a part of this committee. So I'm asking for approval.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Oh, Ms. Chaney?
I just wanted to say also I met with Mr. De Silvestro and I found him intelligent and willing to work in the community. He does wanna, uh, serve in this capacity, so I, I think he'd be a good fit. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the, uh, approval of the appointment to Citizen Financial Oversight Committee. And that passes five to zero.
Ms. Cox will get him all acclimated into the system and we'll get him a red book. I think I already gave him a red book.
Perfect.
Good deal.
All right, um, item sixteen, just information only, some year-to-date financials and quarterly asset reports. Um, so I'll move to item number eighteen, which are our updates. Structural update is first with Mr. Jensen. Come on up.
Good morning, Chair Cho, Board Members, Superintendent Wyssong.
Good morning.
And congratulations to our graduating seniors. We'll have our first ceremony this evening for Braden River. And then graduation will continue, uh, throughout the week. Um, we have received notification that there's the potential for adverse weather. This week, so we'll be closely monitoring that. And as weather patterns develop, we'll communicate with students and families to notify them if there'll be any. Changes to commencement, uh, ceremony times in order to, uh, to accommodate the weather. But we're really looking forward to a week of celebrating the accomplishments of our, of our seniors and, and again, celebrating the amazing learning that takes place. In the school district of Manatee County. Um, another celebration of the, um, incredible learning that happens in Manatee County. Is our, our continued, uh, state assessments that we're delivering over the course of May. May's a busy month for us. We have, um, testing continuing this week, um, with predominantly students, um, taking, um, math assessments throughout this week. We've already had students complete AP exams, ACE exams, civics, biology, US history. And, um, we've successfully tested more than ninety-five percent of our students in reading and ELA on the PM three fast. So ultimately, um, based on the results of this testing, we should have an end-of-year data presentation to share with the board at the five-twenty-eight meeting. As kind of a wrap-up to this year's, um, assessments and, and measured learning outcomes. Um, also as a reminder to our community members and families, the last day of school for students is Friday, May twenty-fourth. Um, leading up to that last day, the twenty-second, the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth will all be early release days with high school dismissing at one. Elementary K eight schools dismissing at one fifty and middle schools dismissing at two forty. Um, MTC is continuing to have open enrollment for programs based on available space in each program. Um, GED and ESAL students can still apply. This year, MTC has over seventeen hundred students enrolled for the programs offered. Last year at this time, we were at eleven hundred, so that's an increase in fifty-five percent in enrolled courses. Um, and then in addition to our state testing, uh, many of our students across our schools are finishing up their industry certification testing for this year. That's where they're able to pass, um, you know, these, these industry certification exams that help prepare them for careers. And also generate funding for their programs at their schools to continue to, uh, to expand and support student learning at our school sites, which is exciting. And then like, uh, Mr. Chapman mentioned, we are, uh, continuing recruiting, uh, teachers and employees for next school year as well. Um, our human resources department completed an instructional job fair on four-twenty where we hired, um, forty new employees at that opportunity. And we will have, um, a, a new opportunity, uh, virtual brazen teacher job fair on Thursday, May thirtieth, from nine to eleven. For anyone who may be interested. So thank you.
You have any questions for Mr. Jensen? I don't see any. Thank you. Uh, operations update, Mr. Rinaldi's out, but Mr. Clark has his notes, so come on down.
Good morning, Board Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Wyssong. Thank you for the opportunity to, to just share a few updates. The operations teams are gearing up for the summer push. Uh, as you know, this is a busy time for us. As the buildings are pretty empty and it allows us to get in and do some major work on our campuses. The maintenance and construction services teams have a number of major projects that we're either working on or will be completing this summer. Examples are Braden River High School, Lakewood Ranch, Southeast High School, artificial turf projects. We have media center renovations. We have a number, number of other school renovations that we're doing that you've been updated on. Our food and nutrition services are preparing and serving at over sixty-four sites this summer. Uh, that's to include our schools, a number of our schools and community centers as well, such as the Rossi Park. Uh, last week was our food and nutritional services, uh, employee week. And, uh, we honored all of them and just wanna say thank you to them for all the hard work and dedication of our employees that work in that area. Uh, next Friday, as Mr. Jensen said just a minute ago, is the last day of school, which is May twenty-fourth. Unbelievable. Unbelievable, unbelievable. We are, the superintendent has set up, we're gonna do our bus send-off. On that day, you'll receive an invitation. We welcome you to come out. As you know, that's an exciting time and the, the drivers really enjoy seeing you. So thank you for allowing me to update you.
Thank you. I don't see any, anyone.
So the twenty-fourth is the last day?
Yes, Friday.
Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and that's the bus.
Friday.
Right.
Bus is the Friday.
Okay, I got it on my computer. Okay, great, thank you. Friday.
Like we just waved to him to go out on the first day.
Yes.
Just don't know what time yet.
I'll set the time. It's early. First thing in the morning.
I know that, yeah.
We'll get that out to you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, any legal updates, Mr. Dai?
Uh, we're in, we're still in negotiation with the Artisan Lakes, uh, developers, owners, uh, to, acquire a school site in that area, uh, ongoing, but I think we're getting pretty close to, uh, bringing a contract to the board. Um, for a new school in that area. That's north, uh, you know, that, that's the area. Yeah, Moxon Wallow, North County. Um, transitioning to, uh, assisting with the general council duties. Kind of been my main occupation the last couple of weeks. Going smoothly, uh, enjoying working with staff on that. Um, I'm not looking to take that on permanently. But, uh, anyway, other than that, it's, it's been pretty quiet.
Thank you very much. Um, Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Board, I appreciate, uh, you allowing us to recognize the forty-year employees today. Um, I, 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 I joined Mrs. Foreman in, in enjoying the opportunity this morning to network a little bit and have breakfast. And, um, just the, the wealth of knowledge, um, and some of the history lessons I picked up in that hour. Um, from, from the folks I did not know and, uh, uh, others in that group I've met with during the course of this first year. And, um, it's just fascinating to see how well-connected everyone is. Many, many of these folks have known each other, have crossed paths along the way, um, and it, it, it's a reminder of how tight this community really is. Um, and, and so I appreciate that. Um, likewise, I think, um, uh, last week, uh, with the cabinet out delivering bags. To the twenty-five-year employees, um, um, very emotional for those folks, uh, to be, to be recognized. And, um, again, as, as Mr. Chapman, uh, pointed out, we're not corporate America, so there's no Rolexes, there's no bonus checks. Um, but, but there's a lot of gratitude and a lot of, um, um, shared sense of belonging. So it was a, uh, it was a, it's been a wonderful couple of weeks. Uh, Board Members, thank you for your approval of the consent agenda. Uh, this one was a little bit heavy with twenty-four items on it. Um, we're in, um, the season where contracts are being reviewed. And either, uh, renewed or not renewed, you're seeing the ones that were renewing for approval. Um, there are others, um, that as we evaluate. Do we still need a service? Do we still need a product? There are, there are some we're saying goodbye to. Uh, and of course, those don't come to the board for approval. That's just handled through, you know, our purchasing department and, and our leadership team. Um, but, um, the, the consent agenda will be heavy for the next few meetings. A couple of, um, highlights from the consent agenda. Um, first, um, within the human resources area, uh, there were three administrative changes, um, that were announced. And so, um, again, this, this, these were already public knowledge, but just to highlight, uh, Dr. Guy Grimes, uh, longtime principal. Uh, at Freedom Elementary is on the move and will be the principal at Johnson K eight next year to take over for Tony Lasada. Who has announced his retirement. Uh, this was the next step in, in Dr. Grimes' career to, uh, lead a, uh, elementary middle campus. And, and we're excited, um, that he sought out that opportunity. Uh, and, um, uh, uh, great news for the Johnson community. Um, we also announced the promotion of Braden River Elementary Principal Josh Bennett to Director of Exceptional Student Education Services. Mr. Bennett started his, uh, career as an ESE teacher and has, uh, risen through the ranks. And, uh, successfully, very successfully led, uh, two schools. And, uh, we are, uh, looking forward to welcoming him, uh, to the district team. Uh, and finally, uh, we announced, uh, that Shannon Fleming, our Director of Secondary Curriculum. Who also has had a very successful career as a classroom teacher and a school administrator and then, um, rose through the ranks at the district office. Is heading, uh, out to be the new principal at Manatee High School. Uh, and, uh, we're very excited for Mrs. Fleming, who is a graduate of Manatee High, uh, and, uh, still, uh, lives in the area. And, um, a regular attendee at events and now she'll be at all of them. So we're, we're very excited for Mrs. Fleming. Um, additionally, uh, Board Members, um, thank you for approving, uh, a new contract with K twelve Insight. For a product called Let's Talk. Uh, that's a technology piece that is going to, um, help us improve engagement with families. It, it's a piece of software that sits on top of, um, some of our, our webpages and allows parents, rather than looking up email addresses. And copying and pasting them into an email browser and sending an email allows, um, through, um, a form system. Um, to communicate directly with district staff. We're gonna roll this out slowly. It's, it's been very successful in other Florida districts. And, uh, I talked with some of, uh, my superintendent colleagues who highly recommended that we look at this as a way, not only to start streamlining communication. But also to run analytics on what are the common questions that families are asking. How fast are our response times? And how satisfactory are our responses? So we'll be starting. So we'll be starting with the Transportation Department, with the ESE Department, and with the Superintendent's Office. And then as we give the system a try, we will grow it at an at an appropriate scale. So thank you for supporting that new venture. And then probably most importantly, you approved the guaranteed maximum price contract on the East K eight. That construction pre-work was already underway, and today's vote locks in again that final price and allows work to continue. And thank you to Jessica Roddenberry from HKS and Brando Fetzick from NDC, they were in the audience. Just in case there was a last-minute question, and they're all back at work now getting that school built for us so we can get it open in August of twenty-five. As Mr. Jensen mentioned, it's testing season, it's graduation season, we're all very excited. I just want to thank all of our employees who are serving in test coordination roles. It's a thankless, behind-the-scenes, long, long hours job. And there are so many moving parts to the testing process, and they do a great job. They're supported by our assessment accountability department. So impressed with Mr. McCarthy and his team. I can, I can call him and I can pick an elementary school and say, in two days, how many students are taking this specific test? And he can answer the question in in less than ten seconds. I mean, that's how well-choreographed all of this is to be sure that we test every single student. And then also thank you to all of our graduation coordinators, another very challenging job. Hopefully, the weather doesn't impact every impeccable plan they've put into place. And to our high school principals as well, who are putting the finishing touches on their remarks. So we look forward to seeing all of them. Board Members, Mr. Chapman and I finished our breakfast meetings with SAC chairs. A lot of great input from them on future initiatives and projects. And I think the the best takeaway from that series of meetings that we did is that there was a lot of mutual exchange of information. So SAC chairs at similarly situated schools trading phone numbers and and email addresses so that they can compare notes and and share best practices with with each other. And I think that's gonna be a really important network as we move, as we move forward and tackle some of the the work ahead. As a reminder, we we have back-to-back workshops the next two weeks. On Friday, May seventeenth, we are tackling the quarterly audit committee update, and then we're giving you part one of next year's budget. We're gonna look at the capital fund. We will be giving you the report from the calendar committee for the draft student calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six. And finally, doing a strategic plan update on technology project implementation. And just a reminder and also an explanation for the public, our workshop starts at nine. I I did call a special meeting for eight fifty-five, that's a one-item agenda in order to get your approval related to my recommendations for promotions to principal and principal movements. Those will be announced later this week. And of course, we want to get those board-approved and moving so that people who are being promoted or on the move have an opportunity to say their goodbyes at their current schools and say their hellos at their new schools before our teachers leave for their very well-deserved summer break. So that'll be five seventeen. And then on the last day of school, after we waved to buses and get cleaned up from that, we'll have another workshop. We'll have a presentation on workforce housing. We'll do part two of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, which is the 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 school and district staffing plans. And then we'll go through draft changes to the twenty-four, twenty-five student progression plan and the twenty-four, twenty-five code of conduct in preparation for asking you to approve those documents. So all of that work is on track and moving forward. And I'd like to close just with some shout-outs to some students and student groups that I've encountered or met with over the last two weeks. Was out at McNeil Elementary last week to do employee recognition bags. Ran into a VPK class that was headed out to do a nature walk looking for items that start with the letter R. That was their letter of the day as they were working through the alphabet. And I got to spend a few minutes with them and their great teachers. And it struck me, getting back in the car after that visit, that I was talking to children in the class of twenty thirty-six. It's a reminder of the work that happens in this system. Also, last week had an opportunity to make surprise visits to Bay Shore High and Southeast High. And Board Members, we presented surprise scholarships from the Florida Prepaid Program to two graduating seniors who were admitted to Florida universities and and had some additional financial need. And Board Members, that was because you approved the MOU with the Florida Prepaid Program to be sure that our families had that information. And those two scholarships went to two awesome graduating seniors whom you all have met before and who are staying in Florida for their college educations and hopefully right back to Bradenton after they graduate. So that was a lot of fun. And then finally, jumped over to Rogers Garden yesterday to say hello to two second-grade students who, for one of their class projects, drew pictures for me and sent them over to my office. And so I surprised them with a visit yesterday, and they talked to me all about their plans for summer reading. So a lot of great, a lot of great stuff happening at our schools, and it's a privilege to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Moving on to board comments, Ms. Foreman, you are first on my list.
Yay, okay. Some of the things that have been, have gone on in the last couple of weeks. One was, I just want to bring up yesterday, Mr. Tatum was visiting his mother for Mother's Day and asked me to sub for him at the Central Florida Consortium meeting. And the person who had spoken at our Finance Three Point O conference was there going through the breakdown and calculations of how FAFP gets gets calculated. You know, we know what it is, but you know, how these formulas get, you know, each each component, how it gets calculated. Two things I thought was very interesting was, one is that the enhancements, which is what we use to pay for, you know, for graduation enhance, you know, enhancements to get people graduating, you know, education enhancements, is based on a formula that they came up for each district in nineteen ninety-nine, and they have never adjusted it. And I, you can be sure that our demographics have changed in our graduation and, you know, our needs have changed in all districts, you know, and the fact that we're still getting our nineteen ninety-nine money. It's pretty, pretty bizarre. And then the other was on the compression funding, which was abolished, I think, in twenty-three, twenty-four. That had, it had gone, had it, had it still been in existence? And I'm sure that they rolled some of this up into the the base student allocation, but our share would have been twelve million dollars, so just saying. You know, so finances are always a challenge. And speaking of finances, you know, after the Three Point O meeting or conference, I came away with with a lot of questions about fraud protection and and so on. And Ms. Sellers and Ms. Miley met with me yesterday and to go through that. And I, a lot of, we are almost the star pupil, you know, for, we we meet everything, pretty much, that they had talked about in that conference, so I was very pleased. Also had a phone conference with Serge Jorgensen from Silent. And so it, you know, at another opportunity, I'll have a chance, he'll he'll be presenting to us. And that's done in the shade because it's our security. Audit Committee met, and we'll be doing a report on Friday. There's some activity out of that, you know, that that we'll need to act on and make decisions on. And then I attended the SAG Middle FFA banquet. And Mr. Chapman spoke and learned some interesting stuff about him in middle school. I'll leave it at that, you can, you can ask him, ask him the trivia on that, but it was very enlightening. So I, but it was a great evening. And I got, first time I got the tour of the Ag classroom and backyard, you know, or the whole Ag thing. And my goodness, we have, we have gone way above and beyond what I certainly would have expected or hoped for. I mean, it's just, it's amazing, the amount of space in the cla, indoors and outdoors, the greenhouse, the the chickens. They got rid of the rooster, but but it was, it was great, it was great, just really, really enjoyed it. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
See you at graduation.
Yeah, we'll see you tonight. Ms. Messenger?
I don't think I have much to add, other than I really appreciate the recognitions today, so thank you, everyone that put that together, that was really wonderful. And I'm excited for graduations, this was a joyful week, so that's it, thank you.
Ms. Tatum?
Very quickly, just two things, number one is a safety tip for the day or the week or for this meeting is hydration, it's getting hot out there. So being in the military, they're always harping on us about that. So a couple of thoughts, number one, drink some water in the morning because your body has gone all night without drinking. And then number two, if you wait to drink till you're thirsty, it's too late, right? That's your body telling you you're already low on water, so keep drinking during the day and take those water bottles with you. So that's my safety tip. And then I've been doing my feeding empty little tummy deliveries and talking to more parents. And Dr. Weisong, I'm happy to report that a hundred percent of them are happy with Manatee County school system. And these are even people that are coming from up north. You know, a lot of times we'll hear like, well, you know, up north, it's so much better in that state or this state or whatever. But you know, these are people that are moving down here and they're very happy with the system, so that's good to report. And I think we have a good school system here in Manatee County and much like Forrest Gump. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Ms. Frey?
Okay. I have a new great-grandbaby, so that was a wonderful trip up there. Thank you to the board, I was gonna log in and join you, but we were having activities, so couldn't do that at that time, but it was a wonderful trip. I did look at the minutes and everything that took place during that meeting. Went to the Southeast IB pinning ceremony with Dr. Weisong. That was the first time I've been to that event, and that was pretty nice. Lot of proud kids that were going through, they're graduating that program this year. And then the group that are coming into the program, and that will be in twenty-six, so it's a two-year program, I guess. Hope I got that right, but that was a a really nice event. I want to say thank you to all of the people that were here today again. It's not, you know, we're in the education business, but we're also in the career. And speaking of that, we have a lot of retirements. We have thirteen people that are retiring with twenty-plus. I don't know if we can get them a little pin, but that would be nice for them to get. We have thirty, four that are thirty years or more on this paperwork that we get through our documents. And there's one with forty. So forty is Barbara Chapley Kenny from art teacher at Southeast High. I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we had all of them that are still here with us. We may have to get up to a sixty-year pin, you never know. But everybody that's, you know, dedicates their life to a specific field, I look, I I respect that. But I also want to say to my safety thing and to my talking to those individuals upstairs is there are still a lot of things that we need to do differently. Part of that is, I, my message to anybody out there is to the students and the parents, you need to respect the people who are trying to serve you. I've had so many nightmare stories about how kids are being very disrespectful to teachers and to staff. And that all falls down to a parent and the parenting, in my opinion. Some don't have that, and I know all about that, but it's still at a certain point in your life, you need to start respecting those who are trying to teach you and motivate you to have life skills, not only in reading, writing, and math, but in the, just life, respect and integrity and those kind of things. So that would be my tip of the day, and we do have a a lot of work to do this week. I always enjoy this part of the year, I did last year. I still have all of the books from graduation. Last year, I was looking through those and going through the memories that we had, so hopefully the weather will hold out and we won't have to do Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just be pretty short and sweet, congratulations to all the seniors graduating this week and especially to, like Dr. Weisong said, the principals and the coordinators. It's a, it's a mighty task when you've got two, three, four, five hundred students graduating, it's not easy. To Mr. Chapman and the and the recognition of our staff members and stuff, what a great event and and idea to do this. I know like today, but also the lanyards and things like that that we'll be doing for 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 next year and and years beyond. I think it adds some camaraderie and really is something special for our employees. And forty years at one establishment, fifty, I mean, that's a long time, fifty years at one establishment, that's a long, long, long time. So we appreciate their dedication, thank you for for honoring them. I will say, as we get to graduation, I saw a quick stat, I I think I sent it to Dr. Weisong. And the state of Florida, I think the Herald Tribune had this out, we're in top, the top fifteen of the least amount of students of dropouts. So I thought that was a pretty interesting stat, I've really never seen that stat. Obviously, we can get better at that, but being the top fifteen out of sixty-seven, you know, counties means that that we're touching our our students, that that we're giving them opportunities to graduate and to to better themselves. And that's what we're here for, is to do that. So I thought that was pretty interesting, and we'd love to be the the number-one county, right, that has zero dropouts. And that's the goals, but top fifteen is 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 pretty cool, I I've never seen that stat before until this morning, so, or maybe last night. We'll see y'all tonight at our first graduation, Brayden River High School. And hopefully, weather stays good, some breeze and some shade would be nice as we get going on some of these. With no rain, absolutely, with no rain. And, you know, as we gear on last couple of weeks here, thank you to the teachers and and the staff and everybody that keeps this this machine moving and the safety in our schools and all that. I'm excited for, I can't believe that the year's already ending, but it's exciting that another one has come to to an end. And we'll see everyone tonight, most people tonight, and Friday for our workshop. We are adjourned.